December 1st, 2016 to order. Can I get a roll call for members, please?
Ellen Bucknam.
Present.
Emery Dorsey.
President.
Donna Kimzy.
Here.
Scott Elam.
Here.
Steve Tims.
Here.
Amanda Weaver. Dirk Bowden and Janet Leo are absent tonight.
The next order on the agenda is a pledge of allegiance. Please rise. Is there a motion to approve the order of the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve tonight's agenda.
Let me go second. Is there any discussion? Call for a vote.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of October 20, 2016?
I move to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Hang a second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Call for vote.
Motion passed, five to zero with one abstaining.
Okay, now is the time to open up the public forum. This is the time for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on tonight's agenda.
No one has signed up.
Okay. We will move on to the public hearing. I open a public hearing for case number WS-16-03, an application filed by Quadrant Properties for approval of a major subdivision with right-of-way vacation on properties on mixed-use commercial located at the southwest corner of 38th and Wadsworth, including 7690 West 38th Avenue, 3790 Yukon Court, 3795 Wadsworth Boulevard, 3765 Wadsworth Boulevard, and 3501 Wadsworth Boulevard, and ask for the staff report.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening. For the record, I'm Lauren McLachlan. I am a planner with the Wheat Ridge Community Development Harvest here to present the case WS-1603. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the subdivision regulations, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation.
So, no.
This property is within the city of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notifications and posting requirements have been met, and the Planning Commission does have jurisdiction to hear this case. So we will begin with an aerial, just to orient everyone to the property. It's a pretty familiar corner here in Wheat Ridge. We have north is to the top of the screen, and we have 38th Avenue here, and Wadsworth shaded in pink. That's CDOT right-of-way. It's a state highway. That's what the pink designates. The subject property is outlined in blue. It has frontage on 35th, Wadsworth, 38th, and Yukon Court. As you can see, it's a little bit irregular in shape, about 14 acres in size. And we'll look at the zoning map now. It's an excerpt of the zoning map, patchwork quilt here. The property is owned mixed-use commercial, and that's designated by that light blue color. That zone district is generally located along major commercial corridors such as Wadsworth, and it allows for really a wide range of land uses. It can include office, retail, services, residential, civic uses. The surrounding zoning and uses are very mixed. I'll walk you through those in a counterclockwise fashion. To the north here, across 38th Avenue, are other properties that are also zoned mixed-use commercial. Most of the Wadsworth corridor to the north is owned MUC and was rezoned to that legislatively by City Council several years ago. To the north of 38th, you have the Walmart Shopping Center and the Safeway Shopping Center. Immediately to the east across Wadsworth in this brighter blue color is another mixed-use district. It's mixed-use neighborhood, a little bit smaller scale zone district. Right on the hard corner is a gas station. You've probably noticed recently that there's some construction going on there. It was previously a Shell station. It's now going to be owned and operated by 7-Eleven, and so they're doing some tenant finish to modify that site, but it will continue to be a convenience store and gas station. Those three smaller lots, just to the south of the gas station in here, are zoned neighborhood and restricted commercial. There's a single-family home, and then two office buildings, one pharmaceutical-related, one architectural-related. And then, south of 36th Place, we start what is sort of a series of more residential uses. These are multi-story apartments that are for seniors, the Morningside Senior Apartment. Two final commercial uses, a countertop cabinet shop, and then an office building here. Those are zoned planned development and neighborhood commercial, respectively. And then, as we go to the west, as I mentioned, it starts to become more residential nature, so two single-family homes. And then, really, a lot of high-density, moderate-to-high-density residential development here, some multi-story apartments to the south of 35th, and also immediately west of the site. This planned residential development, that's PRD, are multi-story condos. And then on Yukon, again, this orange color designates multifamily. That's the residential three-zone district. So, a wide variety of uses and zoning and building types and parcel sizes. As the commission is aware, tonight's case is a subdivision plat, so it wouldn't affect the zoning or uses that are permitted on this property. We'll look at a couple of images. It's a very large site, so it's hard to photograph sort of on the ground, so I've borrowed some 3D aerial images from Google that I think might be a little bit more helpful. It makes the site look a little bit more attractive than it feels when you're driving past it or walking past it. But, for the purpose of this image, just to orient you again, north is sort of to the top of the screen, so 38th up here, Wadsworth cutting diagonally through 35th along the southern boundary of the property. What you can see in this image are the few buildings that are on the property. The most recent land use out here was a car dealership. The Go Ford dealership closed in January of 2010, and the property has been unoccupied since then. In this next image, we're sort of just turning around, so north is at the bottom of the screen. You're looking towards 35th Avenue. What you can see a little bit more clearly in this image is the relationship to Yukon Court. It currently comes off of 38th Avenue and just dead-ends at the subject property. That's a critical observation because we will be extending access through the site, which you'll see here in a few minutes. One of the other things that you can see in this image is sort of the diversity, again, of building types. We don't have a lot of multi-story structures in Wheat Ridge, but many of them are located here in this area. So you've got single-story with some of the shopping centers, and then some of those multi-story residential uses that surround. So, this property is proposed to be platted for the purpose of redevelopment to a mixed-use development that, at this point in time, is slated to include residential and commercial uses, so pretty appropriate given that variety that surrounds it. Right now, we'll talk a little bit about what a subdivision is and isn't. Fundamentally, the purpose of a plat is to create developable land, and it's used to reconfigure lots, tracts, or parcels in order to sell or develop them. The applicant is under contract to purchase the property and would be the one sort of master planning and developing the site. In addition to creating or reconfiguring lots, plots often create or reconfigure easements. We evaluate if we have sufficient right-of-way to either vacate or have dedicated the city, and it's also the time in the process where we start to look at civil documents. In this case, because it's a really large site, we're looking more at preliminary civil documents, and as more details become known, we'll look at more final civil construction documents and more final drainage details. As I mentioned, one of the things that a plat doesn't do is doesn't change the zoning. It doesn't change the permitted uses. This property is the subject of a few related applications, so it will, because it's owned mixed-use and above 10 acres in size, a concept plan is required. That's a document that we are actively reviewing, and it's in our offices right now. That looks just at conceptual land use and circulation primarily, to make sure that we're not piecemealing a property. Site planning will happen in the future, likely next year, and that's really where we start to look at specific building elevations, architectural details, landscape plans, parking lot layouts. So, we don't have those details for this development yet, but we look forward to getting those, like I said, in 2017. Because this plat, I should mention, involves a right-of-way vacation, this will be heard tonight before you, and then will be heard also before City Council, who will be the ultimate decision-maker on this application. So with that, we'll start looking at the plat itself. In this case, it's four sheets. I know this is illegible. We'll get to a few that are more easy to read. This is the cover sheet, and it has sort of our standard notes and declarations, the legal description, vicinity map. It has signature blocks for the property owners and for the city and county officials. The second sheet here is meant to show existing conditions, and again, on a larger or more complicated site, we use an independent sheet to show existing conditions and to vacate a lot of the things that don't need to remain. So what I've done here is highlighted the existing lot lines. As I mentioned, there's four different property owners, and you can see that identified through the different blue lines that highlight the existing parcel lines. That red curvy line that goes through the middle of the site is actually existing right-of-way. So that is what we call West 36th Avenue, and it was dedicated in 2003 when the previous car dealership had plans to expand to the south into that area that was the grassy field that you saw in the aerial. Those plans never came to fruition. The right-of-way had been dedicated. Easements had been dedicated, but no development was ever completed. So what this sheet is doing is officially removing these interior lot lines and that right-of-way, and the various easements that I didn't highlight, because I don't think it would have been quite as legible. But they really were created with a different development context in mind, so they don't make sense for the proposed redevelopment, so we'd be vacating them by this sheet. We'll talk a little bit more about the right-of-way vacation in a minute. Sheet three starts to get into the proposed configuration. So sheet three is primarily showing the proposed lot and tract lines. There are five lots being proposed in this subdivision and two tracts. So, the one tract that you're, that's highlighted here is along the western boundary, and that is what a lot of people refer to as sort of the wetlands area. That was installed, again, with the previous plans to expand the car dealership. It's a detention pond, a drainage facility, and that is proposed to be included in a tract because the plan is to retain that improvement, upgrade it, and continue to use it as a drainage facility. We use tracts to identify land that can't be developed in the future but has a very specific purpose. So in this case, tract A has a note on the first sheet that says this is intended to be used for drainage and cannot be developed with a structure. The other polygons and rectangles that you see here are the five lots, two larger lots to the south, one smaller lot that would likely be a park or sort of public gathering opportunity. Lot one, which has a little tail to provide it access off of Yukon Court, because this may be the last property to be acquired by the developer. It's owned by the Urban Renewal Authority right now. It had some environmental contamination that the Urban Renewal Authority has been remediating and is now monitoring. So that will be its own separate parcel until the point in time where it's appropriate to convey that and redevelop it. The other feature that's shown on sheet three with the proposed lot lines is what's highlighted in red, and that is being called Track B. This area of land is the area that's being dedicated to the city for right-of-way. So as I mentioned, with any subdivision that comes through, we assess adjacent streets to see if they meet our current standards in terms of roadway widths or in terms of sidewalk accommodations. All of the perimeter streets are substandard in terms of what they can accommodate. Yukon Court here on the bottom, 38th and 35th will be dedicating enough right-of-way to accommodate detached sidewalks. Wadsworth is a little bit of a different story. As you may know, the city is currently working with CDOT to design the widening of Wadsworth. It's a separate project. It's currently in the environmental assessment phase. That's still pretty early in the design process, but we think we have enough information to request right-of-way that would accommodate sort of our best guess right now at the biggest possible footprint for Wadsworth. So that includes an additional lane on Wadsworth. It includes wider sidewalks, up to 10-foot-wide sidewalks, up to a 10-foot-wide tree lawn. The reason that you see sort of an irregular right-of-way dedication along Wadsworth is twofold. Currently, our right-of-way line is irregular, and then in addition, we don't need as much right-of-way at 35th Avenue just because it's not as major of an intersection, so the footprint of the roadway there would be a little bit narrower. So, the dedication in that area varies from about 45 feet to five feet. And finally, sheet four, also showing proposed conditions, but in this case, showing more of the details on easements. So the two areas that just lit up in blue are two of the areas that would be proposed to be detention easements. So again, I mentioned tract A, this larger color, is that existing facility that would be fully encumbered by a detention easement, sort of memorializing, again, that use exclusively. The area that's sort of floating up here in Lot One is proposed to be an underground detention facility. We see those more and more in an urban condition where you don't have the land area to produce a detention facility, so you put a vaulting system under the parking lots, and that's what that would be. The other easements that are shown on this are the interior access, public access, and emergency access easements. There's no public roads proposed to go through the development. It's not quite large enough to require that. But as you can see, we've got a grid here that provides a lot of connectivity for cars and for pedestrians. Several of these roads would be designed to really look and feel like a local street, so you may not even know that you're not on a public street. They would also, similar to a local street, they would allow utilities to be put into the, that grid system. Utilities would also be allowed in these yellow areas that just popped up. As you know, the city is not a full-service city, so we work pretty closely with our utility providers, both wet and dry utility providers. We're still early in the process with the subdivision plat. We don't know all the site planning details. So you'll notice one of the conditions of approval is to allow continued coordination with our water district, our sewer district, power, Excel, so that we can continue to make sure that these easements are in the right location to accommodate the needs of the development and the needs of those utility providers. So a right-of-way vacation is just a little bit of a unique feature of this plat. You don't see that on all the plots that you review. There are actually four considerations that are spelled out in the code that we need to look at when the city is vacating right-of-way, and those are listed here on those bullets. I've popped the image in the corner here that shows that existing red right-of-way for 36th, as well as the proposed street network, because I think it does a really good job of helping you to evaluate what the impacts are of vacating that right-of-way and what's being proposed or provided instead. So by vacating 36th Avenue, as you can see with the new network that would be provided, we're not leaving any land without access. One of the goals of the city's comprehensive plan is to make sure that our infrastructure coincides with our land use patterns and that we have good connectivity, and we think that both of those goals are achieved by the proposed network that would replace that right-of-way. We don't think there'd be a negative impact on any infrastructure or a need for any special easements, because, again, that right-of-way was dedicated for proposed dealership expansion, but that expansion never happened, and so this right-of-way exists in theory and on maps, but there's not actually a road out there today. No improvements were ever installed. As with any subdivision or land use application, this was sent on referral to outside agencies and city departments, so what you're seeing here are their responses summarized. Public Works has approved the plat, and with me here tonight is our development review engineer to help answer any questions. This property is within an urban renewal area, and the Urban Renewal Board has confirmed that there's no conflict with any urban renewal plan. As I mentioned, Wadsworth is a state highway, so we've sent the application to CDOT. The applicant is required to obtain access permits and approval from CDOT on any closure of driveways. There's actually 11 curb cuts on Wadsworth on the duration, or on the length of that frontage. Those will all be closed and taken down to about three. So CDOT's actively reviewing those, and will continue to review those as this development moves forward and as we learn more about the Wadsworth design. West Metro Fire can serve the property. They tend to provide more comments once we get to a site planning level where they can look at their fire truck turning radius. And finally, as I mentioned, Wheat Ridge Sanitation, Wheat Ridge Water and Excel are three of those utility providers with whom we'll continue to coordinate. They've indicated they can serve the property, and the applicant will work closely with them to make sure they have the easements that would be needed. Ultimately, staff is recommending approval of the application. We found that the agencies can serve the property. The plat does meet the requirements of the subdivision regulations. That's Article IV of Chapter 26 of the City Code. And we do find that the vacation of West 36th is appropriate and conforms to those four considerations that are in the code. We are recommending three conditions of approval: that there be continued coordination with utility providers to make sure easements are correct before they're recorded. To clarify on one of those illegible notes on that cover sheet, that not only are roadways for public use, but sidewalks are also. That's always been the intent. And lastly, it's not uncommon for a property, or a project like this, to require what we call a subdivision improvement agreement. It's an agreement that memorializes what the developers' obligations are in terms of building some of these public improvements, like I mentioned, all the perimeter improvements and detached sidewalks, and then any of the obligations of the city. So that's a document that we prepare and record at the same time as the plat. So that's the end of my presentation. As I mentioned, we've got Dave here from Public Works. I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is also here if you'd like to hear from them.
Thank you, Ms. McGillicuddy, for that thorough and detailed report. Let's see if the commissioners have any questions. Go ahead.
Hi. All right, just a few questions. I know in the, in the staff report, you indicated on page four that the developers proposed a signal at Yukon and 38th. I'm curious about West 35th. With the plating out of that, southern end is Lot Four, additional traffic might be a concern, and I'm just wondering, is there any, any plan or intention to signalize 35th and Wadsworth as well?
So, at 35th and Wadsworth?
Yes.
As a part of the separate project, the Wadsworth widening project, we had proposed to CDOT to put a signal at that location, and we've done trip generation, which essentially says how many people are going to be, how many new trips are going to come out of this type of development, and added that to the proposed throughput in Wadsworth, and they have, CDOT has indicated that it does not meet their warrants, so it doesn't pass the threshold where a signal would be required. If we disagree with that, sort of on opening day or at any point thereafter, we can continue to submit to them a warrant study, but it's ultimately CDOT who has to make that approval, and they have not yet given that to us.
Okay, all right. Also on sheet, what sheet is this? Sheet four, where we have the easements, the easements recorded. I'm just, I'm noting, I'm looking at the difference on these east-west easements at what would be, in effect, sort of a de facto 36th Avenue and kind of 35th and a half Avenue.
For the width narrows as you get further west.
Yeah. What I'm, I'm curious why we've got a 36, 36-foot-wide easement on the east side of that, that middle easement there, roughly lining up with 36th Avenue, and why the easement to the south is 26 feet. Is there, what's the reasoning behind that?
I believe the answer to that, and the developer can, applicant can correct me if I'm wrong, is because at the entrance, that sort of first half, it will, it'll be more of a complete street, so to speak, so sidewalk and tree lawn on both sides with additional lineage as you approach Wadsworth. So, I can't remember the exact configuration, but as more of the entrance area, there's just more improvements and more vehicles. As you get into the site, they get a little bit more dispersed, and I don't think we have a tree lawn on both sides of this western portion. But as I mentioned, we, we're not at the site planning stage, so we've seen typical cross-sections, and confirmed that the widths they're proposing seem to be adequate for what those proposed sections are. We can add more on the outsides. What we really want to do when we create these access easements is make sure that at least the asphalt is in the access easement, particularly for emergency and sort of vehicular use through, so hopefully. That's not a complete answer, because we don't have the benefit of a site plan, but it tends to be less improvements as you head west.
Sure. So, so the width, even at the narrowest end, the, when we get down to 26 feet, that easement is going to be acceptable for the pedestrian and non-motorized access in addition?
At the narrowest point, it's likely just including the roadway, but that doesn't mean there wouldn't be a sidewalk there, too.
But it just wouldn't be in the easement. It would be incumbent upon the developer to not put it in the easement, put it on otherwise developable property?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be on the lot.
All right. I think, I think that's all I have right now. Thanks.
Commissioner Dorsey?
In looking at this site previously, which we have done, it seemed like there was a drainage easement prior to this on the far southeastern corner of the lot, and I don't see that on this at all. And I mean, that was sort of a bone of contention, I think, when Chesron bought the property, and he had to give up some wetlands in order to facilitate this drainage easement in this corner, and I don't know if that's still part of the deal or...
We, I mean, it wasn't included in your packet, but we do have the previous, it was the John Elway Auto Nation USA subdivision plat. Do you have any of that history? Do you want to speak to that?
I believe that the wetlands was actually moved into this tract A, but I don't recall there ever being an easement over that original wetland area. It was just simply a wetlands area that had to be relocated. Back, at that time, the Army Corps of Engineers actually regulated wetlands of that size. Since that time, they have ceased to regulate anything that's small, so they've withdrawn any, any further regulations on it being a true wetland. But I don't recall there ever being an easement in the southeast.
Yeah. And what Dave's referencing in terms of moving a wetland, you can mitigate, if there is a designated wetland in an area that sort of is inappropriate or needs to be used for some other purpose, you can mitigate it by, by moving it, and there's a process for doing that.
Right. You have to essentially take a similar area, and if you can't accommodate that area on that particular property, then you have to mitigate it elsewhere, and that was, that's a process that the Corps goes through.
Any more questions?
No.
Ms. Kimzy?
I don't have any questions.
Ms. Tims?
Just one question for staff, please. On the proposed plat, the five proposed lots, do those all meet the lot requirements in the MUC district for lot frontage, lot size, without needing any variances?
That's a good question. There's actually no minimums in the mixed-use districts, which is uncommon. Most of our other zone districts have minimum sizes or widths. We don't have those in commercial zone districts, and we don't have them for mixed use. So at this point, we're just trying to make sure that the shapes of them and the size of them seem generally developable and are generally pretty logical.
Okay, great. Thank you.
The, the only question I have for staff is, there, I guess, is there going to be any type of parking or cross-access easements?
Yes. Yep. So parking, I believe there's a, sort of a more blanket access language in one of the notes on the cover sheet that would allow you sort of free movement and parking across the site. At this point, the Lot Four is proposed to be more residential use. That would have a parking facility internal to the site that would be, you know, wouldn't be, it wouldn't even be visible or publicly accessible in what they've currently proposed, but the remainder of the site, the commercial portions, would allow them.
Okay. And then, the only other question I have is on the, the sheet one. As I'm looking at that document, under owner certificate, it appears that it's showing the, the legal description for the old, the, I guess, the current property previous to the, to the plat, and then it references in the data table the information for the, the new lot on the bottom right. And so that's, that's the way it's supposed to be?
It is. Dave, do you want to explain sort of why that legal is the old legal versus the new legal?
The, the way the legal description is, is written on here is, you're correct. It itemizes all of those original parcels per their recorded legal description. itemizes all of those original parcels per their recorded legal descriptions, and then at the bottom, it gives an overall legal description, and that's the purpose of the, or the reason that the data table is included in there is because it's based upon that overall platted boundary, if you will.
So the legal description is, is not changing for the property ownership or not at this time, or?
It, it, it's a combination, it, it actually combines all of those previously platted and unplatted tracks and parcels-
Okay.
-into one overall platted boundary, and that's the purpose for that overall description.
Okay.
What we do typically confirm is that the area that's referenced in the old legal matches the total area in the data table, so that 14.232 is the same in both, so we know we're at least still, we haven't lost anything in translation there.
Okay.
That is correct.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for staff? No? Thank you. We will next see if the applicant wants to come forward for a presentation. You don't, it's, it's entirely up to you, or if you just want to see if we have some questions.
Good evening, thank you commissioners for coming out and reviewing our subdivision plat. My name's Bob Turner. My name is Bob Turner, I'm the Development Manager for Quadrant Properties. We don't have much of a presentation, because I think Lauren's done it all with, with the plat, but I've got my landscape architect and with Point Consulting, Jim Shipton's here, Linda Sweetman, our development partner out of our Littleton offices here also, and they're more of the technical side of our organization, so if you have any questions regarding the plat, I'd be happy to field them and, and have them address that as, as necessary.
And then could you also, I didn't know if you gave your address?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's Bob Turner, Quadrant Properties, 981 South Park Drive, Littleton, Colorado, 80120.
Thank you. Did you want to give a presentation, or you want, is it okay if we ask questions?
Sure, go ahead and ask some questions.
Okay. Commissioner McNamara? No? Commissioner Dorsey? Commissioner Kimzie? Tims? Commissioner Weaver? I don't have any questions, so-
Thank you.
You're off the hook.
Thanks, you guys, for coming out tonight.
Okay, I will, let's see here. I will now open up the citizens forum. Are there any citizens that have signed up to speak? If so, please state your name and address and come to the podium. It looks like we only have one, Casey Robey?
Thank you. My name's Casey Robey. I reside at 7770 West 38th Avenue, number 107, Wheat Ridge Plaza. Currently the Wheat Ridge Plaza Homeowners Association Vice President, and I just had a few questions. I was wondering, could we go back to like, a first aerial picture, so I could point some stuff out?
The flat one, or like the 3D version?
Yeah, right there.
And you can use this mouse here.
Okay, there you go. Okay, as you can see, right here is the two Wheat Ridge Plaza condominium complexes. This is our swimming pool, right here in the middle. So, our property line runs right here, along the far west side of that, of the proposed property, and that's where you mentioned the, the containment ponds, the water stuff that's already been built. Well, one of my first questions is, well, if I could back up a minute, when you said you didn't have no plans or anything, just what, what exactly are we looking at? At shopping malls, or strip malls?
If you want to direct all your questions to the commission, and then we'll sort of take everything, and we can answer as many of them as possible.
Right.
Yeah, so, these are good questions, but we'll get to them sort of at the end.
This ain't quite my forte, but-
Thank you.
I'm, I'm pretty concerned, we've been watching that property for a long time, so is that what it will be? You know, we've heard about a grocery store, do we know?
Tonight, I can, I can see if we can answer that question, but tonight, we're only looking at the plat, we're not looking at any, any of the site design, the concept designs, it's just essentially property lines. But we will take that information down, and we'll see if we can get that answered for you.
Okay, all right, well, that's, and let me, I got a few more questions. If you, you continue on, starting at the end of, you can see where our property, the road go, whoops, I wonder what I done there? Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, so as you, this road right here goes around to the west, and then comes back around the west side of our property. This all right here is an abandoned easement. Do you guys, do you guys know what I, where I'm talking about with that? Where it goes up to 26, or 36, I mean?
If it's on the, on the plat, I'm, I'm familiar with it, but Will, is that your question? You want to know what's going on with that easement?
Well, yeah, because it runs right along the Valencia condominium plaza, and then it runs right along Wheat Ridge Plaza. But it, years ago, the city of Wheat Ridge closed that. It used to be a street that ran from 26 up to 38. Well, they shut that down, and it just looks like an abandoned street now. And I was just curious as to, hoping that that wasn't going to be revitalized and used as an entrance and stuff like that into that property.
We will, we will find an answer for that.
And then, how, how close will the business become? If you brought, if you brought that business, business right up to Wheat Ridge Plaza's property line, 7780, which is the south condominium complex, that, some of them people's front doors are 100 feet from the, from the property line, kind of back to where you was talking about where that water placement is. So, so depending on how close you, you start building to that property line, you're going to, our carports and everything run right there, and a lot of this would be in that south side of Wheat Ridge Plaza, it'd be in their front yard. So them are just some of my concerns. Like, the apartments on Yukon to the north, like south of Vinola Deli, however you pronounce that, none of them will be disturbed? All of them apartments there, on Yukon Street?
Well, we'll find an answer for that, too.
Because then, if we, if we start taking over them apartments, now you're coming right onto the boundaries of 7770. So, I guess them were just kind of some of the majority of my questions I had to ask. Do we know anything about signalization at Yukon and 38?
Yep, if, if you've gone through all your questions, I'd be happy to switch places with you and go through some slides to try and answer those questions.
Okay, that, that'd be great.
Okay.
And then, where could I get these answers, or when will be the next meeting? Will you cover that?
I can cover that one, too, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so those are, those are all really good questions, I think I got all of them, so we'll see if, if we can cover them. So, let's see, we'll start with access, I want to go back to the plat, we'll start with Yukon, and the question about whether this subdivision would impact or how it might impact the apartments, I believe the apartments that you're referring to are those that are shaded in orange here, that's the multifamily on Yukon. They're not, as you can see from this boundary, a part of the subdivision plat, so there shouldn't be any, you know, physical impact on those lots, they're, they remain sort of as they are with the current owners. What could be a benefit for them are two things. You asked about a signal, and I failed to mention in my presentation, but there has been a traffic study also done to see if there's a warrant for a signal at 38th Avenue, because with, with CDOT saying no to a signal on 35th, we need to make sure that we have adequate access into and out of the site and the neighborhood as a whole. You know, we've heard, we had a neighborhood meeting for the concept plan, separate application, but not uncommon in Wheat Ridge, traffic is always a concern, and with Yukon dead ending, they don't have a lot of options. With Yukon getting pushed through as that private drive, there will be more options, but potentially more traffic, and, you know, as you look into the future, 38th and Wadsworth is already pretty busy, it's hard to make left-turning movements at certain hours, so all in all, because 38th is a city-owned street, and we have lesser thresholds for signals, that is something that we think could be appropriate there. So, there is a good, good possibility that Yukon and 38th is going to be signalized. In terms of proximity of buildings to the residential properties to the west, we'll look at the proposed lot line configuration. Tract A here is what will separate essentially the developable lots from the apartments and condos to the west, and the numbers on the screen I know are illegible, but at the narrowest point, it's 70, just about 74 feet in width, and at the widest point here, 146 feet in width, so there'll be that separation. I know, in the past, I've heard people refer to that as mosquito pond, it's been essentially unmaintained drainage facility, so it functions with a little bit more of natural flair than we'd like to see, or than any neighbor would like to see. So, once it is more a functional detention feature, and the water's circulating, we shouldn't have the mosquito nuisance, there'd be more trees and bushes and landscaping that's planted in there, so it's really, you know, it's, it's the back of the property, so to speak, but when we get to site planning, we certainly don't want it to feel like the back of the property, it will be more, more landscaped to be more of an attractive element of the site. In terms of how close the buildings will be, that's not something we can answer yet, you know, zoning likes to see buildings closer to the street, so certainly the majority of buildings would likely be closer to Wadsworth, but in terms of finding out more information about site plans or concept plan or any related application, we actually have on our website an active or recent land use cases map, so it looks kind of like Google and has little pins that identifies where we have active land use cases. That's new within the last couple of months for us, so it would identify cases for this, and who the case manager is, and a phone number, and an email, so it should be pretty easy to get in touch with us to see more documents and designs now and as the project moves forward. I think I covered everything.
You covered the, the, the bounded road?
Thank you. I'm not familiar with that, and it's not on the property, so that's maybe something we'll have to look into separately, but it's not, it's not a part of the boundary of this subdivision.
Actually-
It's labeled on there as public right-of-way-
Yeah.
...outside of the boundary, so that's what Dave and I were saying, doesn't show up as right-of-way in our city map, so we'll just have to look at that further. It's, it's not going to be a part of this development, but certainly we don't want remnant parcels floating around the city, so I've writ, we've both written that down.
I, just a quick follow-up question for you, Lauren, on the, Mr. Robey's question about setbacks for structures, can you remind us again what the sort of setback regimen is for mixed-use commercial?
Sure, so generally, we have setbacks for side and rear property lines, and they're pretty minimal. They can range from 0 to 15 feet, depending on the type of building and the neighboring properties. With multifamily as adjacent properties, the setback can be pretty minimal. Again, you'll have, as it relates to those properties to the west, you'd have the distance of the track day plus the distance of the sort of public access easement drive there, and then likely a building. What we have in mixed-use zone districts is what's called a build-to line, so we encourage buildings to be located closer to the street. Think of something more like Belmar, or, you know, downtown, or Platt Park area, where we want a building within 20 feet, so we don't have a required setback, we have a required build-to, where you have to put the building within 0 to 20 feet of the, of the street-facing property line.
Okay, thanks.
Could I have one more question?
You'll have to, if you could come to the podium, sir.
Her answer to where the blue line is, that, that's pretty much what I kind of thought that you wouldn't be coming any further west towards our property, and that is, that's a substantial distance, so that would be fine. My one more quick question, to the east of the, the canal, whatever you want to call it, your one-inch square up there, what about lighting? Will, will lighting be taken into consideration with the property at 7780?
Can I go ahead and answer that? Yeah, so that's also, you know, a site design issue that we don't have all the details on now, but I can tell you that generally, in the zoning code, we have provisions that require lights to be contained the, within the property line, so there can't be spillover, and we measure that, once we get to the site planning standpoint, with what we call photometric, and it shows sort of what the foot candles are, what the brightness is as you approach your property line. So, we highly encourage that to be cut off before it gets to the property line.
Well, and, and I appreciate it, and like I said, I think for the most part, even the, the complexes and that, we're, we're all for, you know, getting that redeveloped, but at, at the same time, we still got to live a lot closer to that kind of stuff, so thank you again.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to come forward to the podium for any comments? Do any of the, I think at this point, I will close the citizens forum. Are there any other questions from the commissioners for staff?
I guess I had one, one more follow-up question on the, the lot line that roughly lines up with 36th Avenue across Wadsworth for staff. Why doesn't it line up more precisely with, with 36th there? I know there's, there's probably a, going to be, you know, a division there in terms of not being able to cross from one side of Wadsworth over to the other on 36th, but in keeping with the policy of, you know, extending the grid when you can, is that a concern at all in terms of staff, you know, being a little more precise with that line alignment?
That's a really good question, and it's not something we addressed at all in the staff report. It is, situation is actually that the right-of-way across Wadsworth for 36th is only half width of right-of-way.
Okay.
So what you're seeing in terms of that lot line that's across from it, it looks offset, but it's actually lined up with what would be a future center line if we were to build a full-width street across from Wadsworth. The, the property that's dedicated right-of-way is to the north, and it'd be, I believe, the one to the south that would need to sort of do their half, or the city would buy in the future, so it looks offset, but we're, we're trying to plan ahead.
Okay, all right, yeah, that's the only other thing that caught my attention, thanks.
Any other questions? So on your comment, you're asking if the, that potential 36th would go further east?
Well, yeah, if, if you look, if you look across Wadsworth, where, you know, there is a little, there, there is that little stub of 36th, 36th Place that then doglegs over to Vance Street, the, the easement that's proposed here that divides Lot 3 and Lot 1, that, that border between those two lots, as Lauren indicated, it lines up with the center line of the actual right-of-way for a notional 36th Place.
The, the other thing I've noticed, too, is I've watched the, the video on the Wadsworth widening, and, and my understanding is that somewhere, there's going to be a left-turn lane going in the, going north, but it's going to be on, not on the, it's going to be the far, it's going to cross over somewhere.
It'll, it'll cross at a signal, yeah.
It's going to cross over the median, and then the left turn will be on the west side of Wadsworth, so I don't know where that happens, and maybe that's why it doesn't match up.
Yeah, so two things, the, just to sort of give the graphic explanation- Yeah, so two things, the, just to sort of give the graphic explanation of what I was trying to explain earlier, this is a little bit of right-of-way. And as you saw, maybe in that more colorful image, it's much narrower than what we typically require. So this line, if you extend it, falls sort of on the southern part of that right-of-way. And the reason being that if we were to ever build out on this side as a full-width street, we'd be adding right-of-way to the south. So then when you extend that, they are aligned sort of once again. And then to your comment in terms of the, one of the designs that's on the table that we're, it's newer to CDOT. So we're working through that right now would include, it's called a CFI. Now I'm going to forget, CFI, uh, continuous flow. Thank you. There's too many acronyms in planning. A continuous flow intersection. And now we're getting a little bit outside of the subdivision case. But one of the reasons for that type of a design is that it allows more throughput and left-turning traffic to happen simultaneously. And that's really the major reason that 38th and 44th fails. It does have a, it doesn't actually have a much wider footprint at, at 38th than what a traditional intersection with two left-turning lanes would have. But you're exactly right. At this location, there would be a signal to cross left-turners over and to come into a lane that hugs this property line and then to go westbound on 38th Avenue. And the right-of-way that has been dedicated in this plat does consider that as one of the options that it could accommodate.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval of case number WS-16-03, a request for approval of the major subdivision plat with right-of-way vacation on the property zoned mixed-use commercial and located at the southwest corner of West 38th Avenue and Wadsworth Boulevard for the following reasons. Number one, all the requirements of the subdivision regulations of zoning and development code have been met. The proposed vacation of the West 36th Avenue right-of-way is appropriate and meets the evaluation criteria, criteria provided in Section 26-118 of the Zoning and Development Code. All agencies, number three, now all agencies can provide services to the property with improvements installed at the developer's expense with the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall continue to coordinate utility service with the appropriate agencies and any updated information regarding utility easements shall be reflected on the plat prior to, to recordation. Number two, the access note on the cover sheet shall be modified to clarify that sidewalks are available for public use. And number three, the applicant shall enter into a subdivision improvement agreement with required security prior to recordation of the subdivision plat.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Call for vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Thank you. Okay, we're now on to other items.
We didn't include any other items on the agenda. But Mr. Ohm reminded me that in case you weren't aware, 2E did pass here in Wheat Ridge. So Dave and I and others in community development and public works will have our work cut out first over the next few years. It's four different projects, one of which is the Wadsworth project. But we anticipate that they'll, they'll be sort of staggered and each sort of have, happen independently with their own processes. And we're looking forward to moving those forward and giving you updates as those investments and decisions advance.
One of the, one of the questions I had and I had asked Mark was, I really enjoyed the video of the cars showing the movement along Wadsworth, but I would like to see in addition. I'm just curious, how would the, the bicycle movement go through as far as, uh, not just going through Wadsworth, but how do they, how do they mitigate? Kind of going through the highway underneath I-70, you know, that transition? That, I just want to make sure that that has been carefully thought through.
Yeah, so we, our team for the Wadsworth widening includes a variety of consultants, but among them is Tool Design Group, which is sort of a national expert group on bike and ped facilities. So in the Wadsworth project, the east side of the road from 35th to 44th would include a 10-foot cycle track. So a facility dedicated only for cyclists next to the 10-foot sidewalk. North of 44th, where volumes tend to drop off a little bit from a pedestrian standpoint, it'd be a 10-foot wide multi-use trail. And right now, what we're proposing is those trails on both sides would tie in down to Clear Creek. The project limits are sort of right at the ramps. So in terms of widening the sidewalk as you go under the interstate, that would fall on CDOT's plate. But what they tend to do, I don't, I can't make any promises of what they will do. But once the project gets closer to completion, they tend to look, figure what the, what it's called. But it's a process where they look for, are there any other projects we could do in this area that we have money for that we should do now for efficiency's sake? So that may be one of the things that they could look at. And then in terms of safely accommodating bikes with a cycle track condition, we're in the middle of looking at sort of what do those crossings look like at major intersections, at minor street intersections and at driveways. The reason the cycle track is on the east side of the roadway is because there's so many fewer driveways right now compared to the number on the west side. That's mainly because the parcels on the east side tend to be larger, sort of this project, notwithstanding most of the properties on the west are smaller, therefore they sort of each other on driveway. Therefore, it's, it's just more potential conflict points. So Bike Ped has definitely been a priority for the city on the Wads project. It's part of the reason that the city is the lead agency on Wadsworth, even though it's a state highway. Because we, we know we care more about bikes and peds than the CDOT does. It's a few years yet in the making, but we're looking forward to, forward to it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn, please.
Second?
I'll second that.
Call for, we need to clear the voting. Thank you. Call for vote.
Motion passed, six to zero.